LTC programming is supported by visiting angels, now hiring caregivers.
I would bring up, if you, well, depends, I would bring up the, the recommendation, if that's what you want to get, you know, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and bring up, and open it.
In there, six foot.
Six foot. Yeah, six foot, yeah, just bring out, ask for an opinion. That's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Open it, then, then you can do whatever the direction is she wants to take.
Whatever they want to do.
Whatever they want to do.
Yeah.
They're here, people are here for that, so.
Everybody, please rise. Dear God, today, as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Here.
Counselor Noom.
Here.
That's nine present.
I believe we have a moment of silence. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for a dear man, Manuel S. Paez, beloved husband of Diana Coelho Paez. Manuel was born in Graciosa, Azores, Portugal. Prior to his retirement, Manuel worked as a screen printer at East Print Inc. in North Andover, Mass. for 30 years. However, he had worked at Paez Family Fish Market on back Central Street for the past four years. This was formerly Martin's Family Fish Market. He was a dedicated member of the Portuguese-American center where he served as the past president and farmer manager. Additionally, he played on the over-forty Portuguese-American center's blue soccer team and played in the band at the center. Manuel was a friendly outgoing man, and he will be remembered as that. He had a heart of gold. He was kind and pure. He was my friend. In addition to his wife, Diana, Manuel has survived and will be deeply missed by his three children, Lucia, Maria, Paez, Anna, and her husband, Michael Picardi, and Jason Paez, and his companion, Amelia, who worked along with Manuel in the family fish market, and their, and five grandchildren. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. He will be truly missed. We also offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who have passed on since our last city council meeting. May they rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, please, Docking Chambers. Thank you. First, we'll do the acceptance of the minutes. The Minutes of the Environment Flood Issue Subcommittee of January 22nd and the City Council meeting January 22nd for acceptance. I need a motion to accept the place on file by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Cirillo, do you have a request?
Yes, I would like to please take motion 10.3 out of order.
I need a second.
Second.
By Counselor Kennedy. Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
We have some speakers. Do you want your people to speak for us?
Yes, but you're going to read the motion.
I'm sorry. Clerk, remind me, we have to read the motion.
Thank you.
I apologize for that. Counselor Cirillo, request city manager to have proper department provide the city council a plan to design and build Lowell's own municipal broadband network to provide our residents fast and affordable internet service. Counselor Cirillo?
Yes, if we could have the speaker speak, and then I will. Thank you.
Second.
Ruth Potwin.
Ruth Potwin, 463 Douglas Road. Good evening, Mayor Samaras, members of the city council, management team. I'd like to share with you my reasoning in support of Counselor Cirillo's forward-looking motion regarding municipal broadband for Lowell. First of all, our household does not subscribe to cable from any provider. And our access to the internet is by way of DSL, through a connection on our landline. How quaint, you might think. How technophobic, you might ask. Actually, quite the contrary. We support wholeheartedly the technologies which improve our lives, the community, the environment, while making economic sense. This is why we have 28 high-tech solar panels on our rooftop through the Solarize Lowell program. However, we do not support the companies which take advantage of individuals and communities while raking in profits for a few top dogs. This is why we will not have anything to do with the likes of Comcast, which seems to value profiteering rather than investing in the upgrade of the infrastructures to support its subscribers. It's a racket, plain and simple. According to the latest data from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization established in 1974, over 750 communities across the country have created some form of local internet network. A shining example of a city's rebirth as a gig city is that of Chattanooga, Tennessee. According to a 2016 Kaufman Foundation report, Chattanooga's success came about by collaborations among foundations, civic groups, public-private partnerships, including the creation of a municipal broadband network in 2010. All of these elements together created a thriving entrepreneurial ecosystem. I encourage the city council, the management team, to review that Kaufman report, and I believe that you would agree that Lowell is primed for yet another renaissance. Please consider Counselor Cirillo's municipal broadband motion as one thread in weaving a strong and vibrant web to better connect Lowell's residents and businesses with each other and with the world. In order to save paper, I provided links of the reports that I've mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Potwin.
Gary Potwin, 463 Douglas Road, Lowell. I'm Ruth's husband. All I wanted to add to that was that in this, as in so many other things, there are ways to do it well, and there are ways in which it fails. And so, heaven forbid, that something like this should be done in a way that fails. And this is where I'm going to second what my wife said with regard to the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. They go back to 1974, helping communities to build their own municipal broadband. And hopefully, what will happen is we can take advantage of the experience of these other people and not have to try to reinvent the wheel ourselves and make mistakes along the way. So I think this is a really, really good idea for Lowell, for people who are very frustrated with their internet connection, and I think it would be a really good idea for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ty Chum.
No more speakers.
All right, that completes our speaking. Counselor Cirillo?
Okay, yes, thank you. I'm just going to do some reading here. The Louisville Chief of Civic Innovation, Grace Simral, said, "At this point, who would go to a city that doesn't have electric utilities? Who would go to a city that doesn't have water or access to highways? Fiber is that type of infrastructure plan." And I, I agree with this statement because it, oh, my mic is on, sorry. I feel that now everyone relies on the, on internet access for work, for contacting people, for, for, for your, your television, for everything. I mean, it's so integrated into our lives now that it is, it is pretty much a necessity, and I would consider it an infrastructure project. And I, I read that Governor Charlie Baker's administration last week released 4.6 million to Ashfield, Leyden, Shutsberry, Plainfield, Windsor, and Mount Washington in grants that will cover about a third of the cost of the towns barring the rest to build their own fiber optic networks to serve homes and businesses. And so, there's, so they're already starting to have cities here in Massachusetts that are setting up their own fiber networks. And also, through the National Telecommunications and Administration, and Information Administration, the agency manages two broadband grant programs funded by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. The Broadband Technology Opportunities Program and the State Broadband Innovation Initiative, excuse me. Through these programs, the NTIA is overseeing an investment of approximately $4 billion in projects throughout the United States to support the deployment of broadband infrastructure, enhance and expand public computer centers, encourage sustainable adoption of broadband services, and promote statewide broadband planning and data collection activities. And the NTIA awarded a total of $293 million to 56 grantees, one from each of the 50 states, five territories, and the District of Columbia. For the designees, grantees are using the funding to support the efficient and creative use of broadband technology to better compete in the digital economy. These state-created efforts vary depending on local needs, but include programs to assist small businesses and community institutions in using technology more efficiently. So I looked, I looked at the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, and they awarded, to the state of Massachusetts alone, $104,721,175. And of those, of that grant money, you'll be very surprised to know that the University of Massachusetts Lowell received some of that money. They received $783,094. And I'm going to read to you what the UMass Lowell grant was for. "The Lowell Internet Networking and Knowledge Project proposes to increase the adoption of broadband services by working with a diverse set of partners and using an intergenerational approach to bringing the digital divide. This initiative is designed to reach low-income and at-risk youth, the unemployed residents without college degrees, and seniors. The project intends to build out 11 public computer centers to serve 6,650 new broadband users and add 7,500 additional broadband subscribers in the Lowell and Merrimack Valley, an area designated a renewal community by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The technology training includes working with the University of Massachusetts Lowell students in computer centers to provide broadband-related training to vulnerable populations, including the nation's second-largest Cambodian community. The University Center for Family Work in Community plans to measure the project's impact by developing a survey tool for use at each outreach event, allowing comparisons of broadband awareness at the beginning and the end of the project. Also, the university intends to work with Lowell's broadband providers to obtain data on new subscribers." So, University of Massachusetts Lowell has just received a grant for, to help out the city of Lowell and their residents. So I feel that if, I would love to have the city of Lowell put together a plan, and even if we can work with UMass Lowell, and, and we can probably tap into some of this grant money, and I think that this is a positive, forward-thinking effort. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Noom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Counselor Cirillo for the forward-looking motion. I do agree with Counselor Cirillo and the speaker. It is pain to see Comcast, you know, every couple months, or maybe every year, increase their rate, and the pain that I feel, I'm sure, is shared by resident of Lowell. When you have one company monopolize the service, the access of internet, that's just not right. So, community broadband network, I think, is also give voice, give choice to people. And I'm sure with competition, you will see the rate, at least the rate, will low, and the enhancement of service. So I, I'm sure, a couple, actually, a couple weeks ago, Counselor Malanazzo brought up a company, CRN Company, and I know that the city working on it was CRN Communication to try to bring lower them to Lowell, and that's the place, place to go. And we have company like CRN or any other company that, investor that come in, the more the more company, the more, the cheaper, and, and the more enhancement, the more benefited to our city, to our residents. So I, I'm, I'm very hopeful that the city administration will work with CRN, and we're looking into whether it may be possible, possibility, if we can have our own community broadband network, if not, having an investor who willing to come in and make it work for residents resident of Lowell. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think this is an excellent motion. I think it's something that the city council looked at a couple of years ago, but it's certainly worth another look again. And this time, maybe we could do two things. We could maybe bring it out 10 years, or 15, or 20 years to see if it becomes, my, my recollection, and I could be wrong about this, is that the last time we looked at it was the infrastructure costs that were going to be exorbitant, and so it was going to cost a lot of money. But I think this time, it might be good to do a couple of things. First of all, to, to forecast it out 10 or maybe 20 years and see whether it makes financial sense doing that. And then, another thing that we could do is look at a larger geographical area, because we pay high costs for Comcast, so do each of the towns in the surrounding area. And I'm sure that they would want to join with us in a venture like this if it was, if it was going to be, if it was something that we could do. And I think combine that with the, as Counselor Cirillo pointed out, that the university is involved with, with the same thing. It certainly deserves another look. I don't know anybody that's happy with the amount of money that they pay for Comcast. And so, if, and also too, if Chattanooga can do it, Lowell can do it. So I'll be anxious to see the report. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Apologize. City manager, we have a couple of issues. We also, the, the public hearing's coming. You have a report from, from your team, or do you want to?
Yes, this was in response to a motion some weeks ago from Counselor Mercia and Counselor Elliott asking CTI to come in and give us a presentation regarding the work they're doing, particularly around youth homelessness. They are here with a, with a presentation, not, not a lengthy one, but that does touch on this very important area.
Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, thank you for inviting CTI. Myself and Counselor Mercia, we are board members, and we thought it was important to, to bring this information to the people of the city. I was also going to ask, knowing that there is a cold snap coming either before or after the presentation, maybe you can, you know, just let, let people know what is available. I know you've done it in the past, but considering we're at a council meeting, what services are available, the senior center going to be opening, or things like that?
Yeah, we did have a meeting this morning regarding that with Chief Winward, and he's monitoring that, based on what the predictions are for weather, including tomorrow night, Thursday, and Thursday night potentially. The plan would be to activate the warming center protocol in, in the senior center. As, as usual, the, the chief and, and the team will be putting out information, including flyers, and posting this, and letting everybody know the hours that it will be open. Those haven't been settled yet, but we're anticipating it would likely be tomorrow night, Thursday, into Thursday and Thursday evening as well.
Thank you.
Do you want the presentation at this point?
Okay. So the presentation would likely go into the 7:00 time for the public hearing, so if it's all right, we'll have it after the public hearing, if, if CTI can stay.
Okay, we still have a few minutes. Counselor Elliott had requested suspension of the rules. Counselor Elliott?
While we're under suspension, I just would like to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, have the city manager give an update or a report on, you know, the latest, the latest fatality or homicide in the city. I think it's important. I know it's, it's, it's welcome news, it's not good news, but at least, I think it's important for the people at home to, to get an update on, on the stabbing that took place last night and, and what the status of that is.
Thank you. And through you, to the council and to the people at home. Last evening, the city of Lowell did have a tragedy where a young man was killed, and as the investigation is unfolding, it appears the, the suspect now in custody and the person knew each other, and there was a transaction that was going on, having to do with the sale of marijuana. That said, you know, an 18-year-old tragically lost his life and was stabbed. This was done by the Lawrence Drive Riverwalk area. The Lowell police responded immediately. I know... I know the first responders were on the scene very quickly, the fire department. The young man was transported to Lowell General where he was pronounced dead at that point. The Lowell police then worked through the night investigating this and had witnesses that were questioned and then did make an arrest this morning of the suspect who was in custody and is being charged with this. So, I do want to credit the Lowell police for their extraordinary work overnight in many areas of this investigation and the very, very quick response in bringing this perpetrator into custody and charging him with the crime.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I think you hit the nail on the head. Having such swift response, Counselor Elliott and myself were actually at the downtown neighborhood meeting where officers immediately left and responded and just working throughout the night, you know, to restore, you know, the public confidence that we responded and they apprehended the perpetrator. I think that it's good news. I think it's important that we mentioned it, and as you mentioned, you know, the good work of the Lowell Police Department should be, should be recognized in acting in such a, you know, timely manner. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next, we have the auditors business, informational free cash certification, and a motion to accept and place and file by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Conway. Any questions? Got them? Counselor Elliott?
This is good news, so maybe, could we just get a brief report? I mean, free cash, it's, it's, it's good news. It's money that, that was not spent or conservative estimates on revenues, but could you just, Madam Manager, CFO, just report on, on the amount? We did use a piece of the stabilization to, you know, to fund the budget and the, my hope, and I'm sure the hope of the administration, maybe you can explain what the plan is to replace that stabilization money and increase our reserves and so.
Sure. I would turn this over to the CFO, Connor Baldwin, to report on the free cash, and there is a vote further on, on the agenda to, to address what the recommendations as to how to proceed, but Connor can address what the...
We can wait till then. That's fine.
Do you want to wait until the vote?
Well, we can give you the, the number. How about that?
So, the amount, thank you, Madam Manager, the amount certified as free cash in the general fund was just over 2.5 million, which will allow us to replenish the stabilization account, which was our plan that we articulated during the budget process. In addition to that, there is a percentage that we will be proposing later in the, later in the agenda be appropriated into the OPEB trust, consistent with our policy, and we think that that will have sent positive, positive remarks about the city to the ratings agencies, which we believe is really important in this time as we look forward to the bond for the high school. The remaining portion that will complete the plan, we intend to put in the city manager's contingency account for dealing with the issue of the, the bad bills in the school department. We're still waiting for some documentation from them before we can bring a vote to the city council to resolve those. So, that, that vote is before you later in the year. I just want to mention that it is noteworthy, this amount, while it's not, it's not as large as it was last year. We did have some very significant financial challenges at the end of fiscal '18, so to have, you know, $2.5 million in free cash is a testament to the vacancy review committee, the strict examination of all purchase orders and requisitions, the success of those austerity measures.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess it's good news that it's, we have $2.5 million in free cash, but the bad news would be that it is about half as much as what we had last year in free cash, right? We were close to $5 million last year?
Approximately, that's right. It was just, it was between $4 and $5 million last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Malanazo?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just want to recognize the auditor for his work, working with DOR and putting this report together. And again, it's half of last year, but again, it's still free cash, so thank you. Thank you, auditor.
All right. Thank you. Well said. All right. Next, it's now 7:00. We're going to the general public hearings. The first one, 4.1, is the ordinance to amend Chapter 290 zoning by extending the regional retail district to include 55, 75, 77, and 81 Phoenix Ave. I'm going to open the hearing. However, I'd like to ask the city solicitor to, we have a recommendation from the planning board, but it's really, to me, not a recommendation at this point, unless an opinion for us to get to this board. Madam Solicitor?
The, the communication from the, from the planning board is discretionary. The, they could have a favorable recommendation, and the council could still reject it. In this case, as the mayor, I believe, was alluding to, it's a 2-2 vote of the planning board, so there is no positive recommendation from the, from the planning board. Again, in either way, the council isn't, isn't bound by it, but I would also note that the, these recommendations also speak for themselves. And so, in, in this case, there are laid out both the reasons for and the reasons against, and there's some fairly detailed reasons listed against.
So, with that information, what's the will of the council to, to go on at this point, or to send us back to the planning board, or to discuss this at this point and open the hearing? Madam, Counselor Mercier?
I would suggest we hold the public hearing and go forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The first part of the open hearing is those to speak in favor, in favor. Do we have anybody to speak in favor? Please give your name and your address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Madam Manager. My name's Attorney Jim Bowers. I represent the owner of the property at 55 Phoenix Avenue, 75 Phoenix Avenue, and 77 Phoenix Avenue. The property is owned by the Phoenix Avenue Limited Liability Company. They, the principal of Phoenix Avenue Limited Liability Company is Bobby Warren. She is the daughter of the former owner of the property, Frank Matthews, who formerly operated a towing company out of that location. The petition that was filed on behalf of my client is requesting an extension of the regional retail zone, which is located along Rogers Street, to extend it to my client's property, which is on Phoenix Avenue. And if I may just show you a diagram. This, this is a diagram which shows here, the, this is Rogers Street or Route 38 in Lowell. Phoenix Avenue is right here, perpendicular to Rogers Street. The, the, the regional retail, as you can see here...
Excuse me. You really need to speak into the mic because it's not going to the homes.
The regional retail district is, is in the pink on this diagram here. The property that we're asking to be rezoned to reg, to regional retail, if I may, appears in the light purple there, that is the location on Phoenix Avenue. The address is 55, 75, and 77 Phoenix Avenue. Presently, that is a light industrial zone along Phoenix Avenue. My client, there are three buildings located on the property. The property is fronted on Phoenix Avenue by 55 Phoenix Avenue, which is kind of an office building, warehouse space. The two other buildings on the location are a truck repair building and a truck depot. My clients have done a lot of work on the building there at 55 Phoenix Avenue at the front. Mr. Matthews, the previous owner, he had passed away in 2013, and his daughter more or less took over, and her, and her husband took over the management of the property and, and working with the city of Lowell, and specifically, they referenced Sean Shanahan. They brought the building into code compliance with the hope of being able to use the property for a light industrial use. Unfortunately, the building... This is a picture at the top of the building in question at 55 Phoenix Avenue. Despite the work that had been done in renovating and bringing it into compliance, they've had very little success in attracting any type of light industrial use for the property. Since, since obtaining all the necessary permits for the property, they have only been approached by prospective tenants seeking to use it for retail purposes. They've been approached by an auto body parts store, a hair salon, a restaurant supplier, as well as several other retail uses for that location, none that were, that are allowed in the light industrial. Presently, there is one tenant on the bottom floor who they've been renting to since 2017, and they operate a little film studio there. But unfortunately, for the last five years, the second floor has been completely vacant, underutilized, it's 3,600 square feet, and they have not been able to locate any light industrial, any light industrial tenants to that area. Most recently, my clients have been approached by a company that is interested, potentially, if given a license by the city in operating a retail marijuana dispensary out of that location. That would be a whole separate process, as we are aware, for that company to be able to obtain that type of license from the city. But the districts for such a dispensary in the city of Lowell is passed by the council and mayor only to be located in the regional retail district in the Office Parks, Office Park District. My client, as stated, has been attempting to try to put this property to use without success, has had several potential, potential applicants for tenants there, all of a retail variety, and unfortunately, due to several issues related to the property, it's really not conducive to any additional industrial use. The prior use for that building in the front at one time was a, the tow business. It was a much larger building. It suffered a fire approximately around 2005 to the rear of the building, and then in 2011, the roof to the rear of the building collapsed. So, much of its former uses of, as an industrial building is no longer there. And as stated, the property is completely underutilized. To the, to the east, to the north, and to the west of the property, the property is abutted by regional retail, and we are asking for the property, for, asking for the council to allow for the, the area here that is surrounded by that regional retail to also be used as a regional retail district. We did appear before the planning board last Thursday evening, and as was referenced, there was a split vote of the four members of the planning board who were there on Thursday evening. One of the principal issues of the, of the two planning board members who voted in the negative relative to the petition was the issue of the possible loss of light industrial use in the city if, if, if the council were to vote to allow the property to become regional retail. There are specific issues with respect to this property, and I have somebody here that I'm going to ask also to come to the podium to address, but this property itself is bounded by, excuse me, by a significant section of wetlands. Most of the property there on Phoenix Avenue that is owned by my client, approximately two-thirds of the property is, is wetlands, and it severely limits any possible light industrial use with respect to the property. In addition to being wetlands, there's a certain buffer zone that is impacted, that impacts the property as a result of the wetlands there that further limits the use of that property for any type of light industrial use. The existing other properties, buildings on the property were located 75 and 77 through 81, and those are the aforementioned truck repair and truck depots. If the council were to allow the property to be rezoned to residential retail, they would be allowed to continue their use there as a, as a pre-existing non-conforming use. So, as long as they continue to be used in a light industrial capacity, the, the property there would not lose that designation for that use. Only the property at the very front, that number 55, where we are looking to place retail, retail tenants, that would be impacted by any vote of the council if it were to allow for the regional retail.
Any questions? Thank you. So, Counselor Kennedy?
We're going to do questions now?
If, if you wanted at this point, I mean, if...
Okay.
Well, go ahead.
I've got probably several questions. First of all, how many parcels are you looking to have rezoned? Three? There are three parcels there, Counselor. The reason for the three, and it's really not indicated as well on this map, 55 actually sits on all three parcels there. So, the, the building that we're speaking of sits in perhaps... This is a better illustration, Counselor. If you can see this building right here, 55, this is the building that we're talking about, and if you can see the light kind of pink boundaries there, 55 actually sits on all three lots. So, when the property was built, I understand it was built in 1993, it was built across all three lots, and that's the reason why the petition includes all three lots, all three parcels in that location. But all three lots are in common ownership, right? And have been for a long time? They've all been in common ownership with Phoenix Avenue Limited Liability Company. And prior to that, Mr. Frank Matthews had owned the properties himself. Okay. And was this property listed with a broker? I know that they have a manager at the property, but I don't... A real estate broker? A commercial real estate broker, or anybody that's tried to market the property? As far as, as, for tenants. Or anything? For sale? I'm not sure if you mean, or for sale of the property? Yeah. I don't think that my client has, has looked to sell the property, no. Okay. Has there been a broker that's, that's looked to lease the property? Has there been a broker that's been, that's tried to market the property, whether it's for lease or for sale or for anything else? I don't know that. I don't know if there's been a licensed real estate broker. I do know from my client that they've been approached by a hairdresser, a plumbing supply company, an auto parts store, candle company, food service company, and most recently, retail marijuana dispensary company. But I don't know if there's been a licensed broker that's been involved. If there was, you probably would know that, that there was, right? I probably would have been told, to answer your question. Okay. Thanks.
The city solicitor advised that we just finish the hearing for us and then the questions.
Yeah, the questions.
We should do that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I also, I would invite, I have a gentleman, Paul Borbo, if that's possible, to speak next, to speak to the issue with respect to the wetlands.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. My name's Paul Borbo. I'm with PHB Architects, and I was asked to take a look at this property, and one of the things, obviously, that, as Jim had mentioned, creates a very difficult situation for the property, is the size of the wetland alone. Now, one of the things that I want to make clear about the graphic presentation I have here is that this is currently, the information's available online in terms of the wetland, but that wetland area actually, may actually be larger because it has not been, the edge of the wetland has not been designated by a soil scientist for quite a while, so for, for all intents and purposes, more than likely, that wetland is actually encompassing even more of the site than you currently see, but that's the information that we have available as, available to us today. The other thing is, this is encumbered by the 100-year floodplain. Both buildings, number 55... Both buildings, number 55 and 79, 71, 81, are within a hundred foot, or 100-year, I'm sorry, 100-year floodplain. And as a result, those would require, you know, if we were to do anything on this property, repave, add something to the building, modify the buildings, it would require, at the very least, a notice of intent, and then we would have to go through that process with the Conservation Commission and get their approvals to move forward. The reality is that this piece of property is approximately 10.3 acres, two-thirds of which are taken up by the wetlands. I cannot conceive of any, you know, person looking to purchase this property, looking it as a viable piece of property to purchase and then redevelop just because of the encumbrance of the wetland on the site and the sheer size of it, it just makes no financial sense. This, however, by changing the zone, as we've indicated, I think perhaps might allow the city to have their cake and eat it too. This would allow us to keep the current LI use intact as non-conforming pre-existing use. And then on the second floor of building 55 would be the retail use that we're talking about. So for all intents and purposes, all the current uses could remain intact, the zone changes, and the long-term effect of this, I think, would be a positive one for the city because then now you have an owner that has the, is incentivized by the fact that they can bring in a different use, retail use, that would give them an incentive to rehab and get these buildings up to snuff so that they put them back in the tax roll in a much more productive way.
All set?
Can I ask another question, or should I?
Go ahead.
Which?
Go ahead.
Yeah? Okay. The previous speaker mentioned that one of the things that impedes the property is that, or development of the property, is the wetlands. And so there's a buffer. That's, what is it, 100 feet, 50 feet or something?
100-foot wetland buffer, yes.
And so that impedes any industrial development in the area. Wouldn't the buffer hold if it was, if it was zoned to retail? Would there still be buffers in place?
The buffer would remain in place. The difference would be is that you'd get different uses within the building, which would allow the buildings to be rehabbed, perhaps resurfaced.
Again, Adam, just in terms of the buffer, the buffer holds whether it's retail or...
That's correct.
Yeah.
Either way.
Thanks.
Anyone else speaking in favor? Do you have anyone else speaking in favor? Close that part of the hearing. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? Speaking in opposition? With that, the hearing's closed. I need a motion, actually, I need discussion on this, on this issue at this point.
I'll move to deny. Be happy to talk about it, but I make a motion that we deny the petition.
I need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second? Any further discussion?
Again, my reason for recommending denial, I have a number of reasons, but not the least of which is that, as chairman of the zoning subcommittee, we worked tirelessly to put in place a zoning that would accept the marijuana in the regional retail and the high-rise zone, and to have this come before us to really, as a result of a potential tenant to put in a retail facility, I think that there, it's really too early out of the gate, in my opinion, so. And then looking at some of the folks that, and maybe I'm stretching it, I believe the architect here was involved in the 41 Ellis Avenue debacle here in the city. So again, for a whole host of reasons, I move that we deny.
Counselor Noon?
I echo Counselor Malanazo with the hard work of Chairman Linehan on the planning board. I think we do have a goal, sustainability 2025, allowing this, we're deviating from that goal that the city set for those term. And counsel alluded to also that the concern is not only that the loss of the light industrial zoning, but also that the goal of the sustainability low 2025. The other things that concerns me, that, you know, if we were to do this, then that potential, we create a potential for future precedent if any other, you know, light industrial will come before the board and said, "Look, we have properties that retail, regional retail, let us rezone this for this use," and that's not the way to go. And so I think we set a zoning, chairman for the zoning subcommittee, Malanazo indicated, counsel Malanazo indicated that, yeah, we set a zoning for recreational marijuana at the regional retail. Therefore, we should stick to it. So I concur with Counselor Malanazo, and I will join the vote to deny it as well. Thank you.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit on the zoning subcommittee as well, and for much the same reason, the zoning subcommittee spent a good amount of time going over what areas or what zoning districts would be appropriate for marijuana dispensaries, and light industrial was not one of them. Regional retail was. And this is right off the bat, and so it's almost, if we're going to do that and just ignore where it's allowed and just Oscar's extensions, without even, without even having the owner of the dispensary or the person that's going to be the proprietor of the dispensary even look for an appropriate location that's properly zoned, it just doesn't, it just doesn't sit well with me, and it almost means that the zoning subcommittee wasted the time that it spent in determining where, what districts would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, correct. Any further discussion? From my own standpoint, I mean, I don't think we can afford to lose light industrial areas, but a lot of work has been done in this, and the thing that bothers me the most is this would be a piecemeal approach to taking apart neighborhoods. And if we can do it here, it'll be done elsewhere, there's an expectation it'll be done elsewhere. And I think, to go back to the, all the work that the zoning subcommittee made, this would be inappropriate, so I'll also not support this. Any other discussion? Roll call. I'm sorry, Counselor Leahy?
So just a quick question. I could go either way on this. I just am not sure. I understand what the speaker said, but I'm just not so sure, you know, adjusting one parcel here would make that much of a difference where it's not in use now. You know, isn't it better to make the property useful and back on the tax roll than to struggle and try to have it just sit there because it is light industrial, so?
Okay. But my issue was, that can be said in any other part of the city, and we're now encroaching on the various neighborhood groups that have fought very hard to maintain the certain districts, whether it's retail, light industry, and individual homes, so that's my fear. It's a piec, I don't like a piec, it's a piecemeal approach, and I think it could be harmful.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Orders tonight. Thank you. Next, for put to ordinance, amend chapter nine, article five, planning board, 9.15, by increasing associate members from one to two. Open the hearing. Those who want to speak in favor?
Good evening. Eric Slagel, Director of Development Services. This was a request that we had brought forth with a companion request concerning the Conservation Commission in an effort to make sure that our regulatory boards had sufficient members to, for quorum issues. The planning board has approved, I think later in the agenda, they actually submitted notice to the city council that they do approve adding an extra associate member. I think it would encourage folks to get their feet wet, being a member of a public board. We do have, sometimes have a challenge with attendance and quorum issues. These people are, do have full-time jobs usually that they have during their regular time, and adding a member of the, an extra associate member of the planning board would both help us with those quorum issues and also build up what I like to think of as a bullpen of people who, if a permanent member stepped down, would be able to step up and be a permanent member themselves. Thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor? In favor? Portion's closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Move to approve. Moved to approve, second by Counselor Kennedy. Roll call.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
All right, next we have utility public hearing, First Light Joyce Consulting Group requests permission to install underground fiber optic conduits at intersection of Lawrence and Billrica Street. Open the hearing for those in favor. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Michael Joyce with Joyce Consulting Group, the consultants for First Light Fiber Optic. They're proposing to install 240 feet of two new four-inch PVC conduit from an existing utility pole on Lawrence Street in the area of the existing railroad crossing. Once you pass by the Monument Store on the right-hand side, there's a utility pole there. It'd be from that utility pole underneath the bridge, 245 feet, to the intersection of Lawrence Street and Billrica Street, there's another utility pole. It's where the conduit would terminate. Conduit would be buried approximately 24 inches in depth, and the purpose of it is to connect the two existing utility poles, there's no overhead wires because of, I believe because of the bridge there, we'd be running fiber optic through the conduit to connect the poles.
Counselor Elliott?
Will you be, is this kind of, conduit going to go in the street anywhere? Because that area was just paved.
It will be within the street. Yeah, it will be within the asphalt. I believe there's, I don't know that there's any width there that there's, it's not...
So you're going to dig it again? And it's just a source of frustration because, you know, we paved these streets and then you go in and it's trenched and it's never returned to the same condition. Where exactly is the conduit going to run?
So it's currently proposed on the south side of Lawrence Street, in the shoulder, more or less, until you get underneath the bridge, then it comes across towards George's Automotive, but on the opposite side of the street.
Is there any way that you'll pave more than just the trench? I mean, I don't know, is the engineer here? I thought there was an ordinance or a new state law that allowed for them to, that required to do just more than a trench, that it has to be a certain width. That's my only concern. I don't oppose a conduit, but it just seems like we spend an extraordinary amount of money, and neighborhoods wait for long periods of time to get this paving done, and then, you know, it's...
The engineer isn't, but after, the question was raised previously, and she did say it was not going to be Billrica Street, which had been paved, but on Lawrence and then under the bridge. So, but as far as the width of, I believe it does require, or they, we can require them to pave more than just the trench, we can get you the exact width and the dimension.
Thank you. All set? Anyone else speak in favor? Favor? Thank you. That portion is closed. Anyone, anybody wants to speak in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. I need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Malanazo.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Pardon?
So the recommendation would have the paving recommendation also?
Well, they have to pave the conduit. This isn't going on Billrica. One of the questions was Billrica Street had recently been repaved.
Right.
But this is not, it's going to be on Lawrence Street.
Right, but I agree with Counselor Elliott, we just redid the bridge and...
Well, the...
Well, right.
Yeah.
But just having the bridge redone, and then...
It's going under the bridge?
Right, but we want to make sure that leading up to the bridge...
Right.
The road is back to better than normal.
Yeah, and the engineer did say that we can get the dimension that we can require under state law.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is 5.2, National Grid Verizon, New England, requests installation of new utility pole and underground conduit at 97 Tanner Street. Open the hearing for those in favor. Anyone speaking in favor?
Good afternoon. My name is Paulo Sathler. I'm an engineer for National Grid. If anybody has any questions...
Just a little louder so the audience can listen here. Speak right into the mics.
My name is Paulo Sathler. I'm an engineer for National Grid. If anybody has any questions about why we need to install this pole to serve this customer, you can ask me.
All set? Thank you. Anyone else speak in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. I need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for a report and recommendation.
I'm trying to refer to a wire inspector.
Second.
Counselor Mercier, second. Motion by Counselor Elliott. Thank you. Next, we have communication from the city manager. The city manager, we have a report from...
Mr. Mayor?
Could we have...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I thought we were going to suspend the rules to let community teamwork make a presentation.
I was just going to put him in on the communications.
Okay.
That's, just going right to that. Let's open that up. The city manager, do you want to introduce CTI?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council, as I indicated earlier. CTI is here this evening. This is a result of a motion that Counselor Mercier and Counselor Elliott had presented to invite CTI to come to the council to present on issues and work that they're doing in the area of youth homelessness in the city. And so they are here tonight, prepared to make a presentation, so I would invite them to the microphone with the council's permission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Samaras, and members of the council, manager Donahue and team. We appreciate the opportunity to give you a concise, but I hope helpful, look at youth services at community teamwork. This is a very important area of work that we have recently become more involved in, and we're pleased to tell you our progress. I'm joined here tonight by my colleagues, Michael Collins, our chief program officer, Carl Howell, our division director of housing and homeless services, and Amanda Malato, our director of youth services, over here. Some of you attended our youth summit on homelessness. We're very grateful that you attended and participated. That was held in June. And I'm also very grateful to former Mayor Kennedy for starting the rock and roll fundraiser to end youth homelessness, and for our current mayor for keeping it going and making it even bigger. So we're very grateful for that. I'd also like to mention that three of my board members sit on the council, and that's Vesna Noon, Rita Mercier, and Rodney Elliott, and former members of my board, Jim Malanazo and John Leahy, so we have deep connections together. Our youth homeless work was launched in June, along with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who has developed a plan to end homelessness in the Commonwealth. So we launched our initiative in June. Over 100 people helped us in participating this kickoff, and we've been working ever since. But this is not when we started our work with youth or with homelessness. In 2005, community teamwork helped the Department of Children and Families open the first home for young women aging out of DCF at Barchand Hall with the Sisters of Charity of Ottawa. And later, we helped Caleb Foundation open the page apartments for young men who are aging out of DCF. But not all young people who are homeless are aging out of DCF, and the needs were not being met for young people in our city. Some young people didn't ever want to go to an agency like the Department of Children and Families, and some had other issues. So our work has been occurring many years over at 167 Dutton Street. Some of you remember that was our former headquarters at community teamwork till we outgrew it. It has been Youth Built for many years, and that is where you will hear about the services we're going to be providing there from Carl Howell. That will be our day service center, along with Youth Built. He'll also explain how we're rapidly rehousing young adults and providing other services they need to stay in school, get jobs, and become successful. Preventing homelessness, and if homelessness does occur, having a quick response, and research bears this out, helps young people finish high school or receive an equivalency diploma, move on to college, or get a job, and be productive in our community. And the likelihood of them becoming chronically homeless older adults is lessened if we work with them while they're young. So I know we have our slides here. And I think this is supposed to turn to the next one instead of making a noise. Okay. Thank you, Carl. See, I need to bring technology with me because I'm old. See, I need to bring technology with me because I'm old. These are the faces of youth homelessness, and I'm going to tell you about two of them. I'd like you to meet Chris. He's a young man, 17 years old, who was abandoned by his family. He was an active and good student and an athlete at high school. Without an active support system or connections to resources, he ended up couch surfing for many months. Balancing a part-time job with his schoolwork and his athletic schedule, he was able to still have perfect attendance, all while sleeping in a different place every night and not knowing where he's going to put his head on the pillow. Although quiet about his struggles, some faculty did learn from other students that he was indeed homeless. His performance began to slip. He was referred to Community Teamwork through our Resource Center, and through collaboration with school system and other agencies, we were able to obtain long-term supports, housing, financial assistance, and helped him transition to college where he had already been accepted in a rigorous field of study. That's where he is today because of intervention in his life. Next, I'd like to introduce you to Jessica. She's 20 years old and first experienced homelessness as a nine-year-old with her family. She resided in shelters, and if they, when the family did get housed, it was always temporary and they were always on the brink of homelessness. She found it difficult to remain in school, in mainstream schooling, but she did receive a high school equivalency. She found Youth Build and joined and found her passion in culinary arts. This led her to become Youth of the Year in the Youth Build program. She is now working full-time with benefits, is stably housed in a home she provides for herself and her four-year-old daughter. She's also part of our advisory board to help raise awareness and to participate in planning a solution for other youth experiencing the same struggle she once had. And lastly, a very recent story about two young people living on the streets of our city. Our youth services director received a referral from a community partner informing her about two young people living on the streets in this brutal weather. Both young adults were suffering from mental illness. Both have backgrounds that include severe trauma and a long history of state and program involvement. Neither youth abuse substances, however, they have struggled for housing for years. They've been in and out of residential treatment programs, foster care, and struggled to connect with people and get their two feet on the ground. These adults came to us appearing hopeless and not trusting adults in their lives. Staff were able to assess and stabilize these young adults, get a roof over their heads, provide an outlet to voice their concerns, and very importantly, to listen to their dreams and hopes. Today, we can tell you they are housed. They have plans to continue their education, obtain unemployment, and get connected to the other community services they so desperately need. These are the stories, only a few of the stories. Carl's going to tell you about the scope of the problem and about our solutions, and we believe this is a problem we can fix. So, I'm happy to introduce Carl Howell.
Thank you. Thank you. 200 young adults. We're not talking about a substantial amount of people. We're not talking about thousands of young adults. We are talking about a vulnerable population that are experiencing a significant amount of trauma because they have no place to call home. There were 200 young adults in the city of Lowell that reported experiencing housing instability last year. 200 young adults. This is certainly a challenge we can meet head-on. We will see the numbers rise and become unmanageable if we continue to ignore the fact that young adults are aging out of systems, that they are, that their support systems are fraying, that they are falling into substance use crisis, and that they have lack of mental health supports and a lack of housing opportunities. Homeless prevention in our eyes is vital. For every day a young person experiences homelessness, it increases the likelihood of future experiences by 2%. This means if we reduce a young person's experience by seven days, that we will reduce their future homelessness by 14%. If you were to look at the average age of a homeless adult, you'd be looking at a person who is in their mid-30s. A significant number of them experience homelessness as a young adult. But what if there were supportive services when they were 18, or 19, or even 22? I believe that there would be less chronically homeless individuals on the streets if we had more comprehensive preventative measures put in place early in adulthood. You're seeing here is our new org chart of our youth services. CTI is implementing preventative programming for young adults in Lowell to stop homelessness in its tracks. CTI has created a youth service department, and this department focuses on three points of service. The first is our youth engagement service. CTI provides outreach and assessment services in the community where we are engaging providers, city departments, the interfaith community, and other community entities to help support youth while in crisis. We are engaging youth where they are congregating, and we are providing, we're building trust by providing youth-focused services. The highlight of our engagement services is our milieu program. The milieu is a playful twist on the French word meaning middle place, or also defined as a setting where something develops. With Lowell being the mill city and our programming representing young adults, it's only fitting that we have a setting where young adults can develop, excuse me, can develop in a safe environment called the milieu. The milieu will provide young adults access to case management services, goal planning, soft skills training, mentoring, and basic survival supports. The second point of service that you will notice on this chart is our student supportive services. CTI, as Karen has mentioned, we operate our Youth Build program that serves 64 units per year, 64 students per year. Students graduate each year with a high-set diploma, certifications in culinary arts, or construction trade. This program also prides itself on the worksite placement and internships that lead to our graduates becoming gainfully employed in the community. CTI is also collaborating with the Lowell Public Schools and Youth Harbors to support youth in our school systems that are experiencing housing instability. One of the newest programs is our College Housing Pilot Program, where we collaborate with UMass and Middlesex Community College, who are providing housing for five students that are homeless. CTI is providing the wraparound case management services and creating long-term housing strategies for these students. CTI is also committed to supporting UMass and Middlesex Community College to aid other students that are experiencing, experiencing or at risk of housing insecurity. The last of our three point of, three service points is our rapid rehousing and stabilization programming. Under this point of service, we'll be offering rapid rehousing funds to safely rehouse youth as quickly as possible. These funds can be used to minimize financial barriers to housing. CTI is also offering transitional housing units to homeless youth. This program provides 18 to 24 months of housing while they are engaged in intensive wraparound case management services. We will also be providing stabilization case management services for all youth that we've successfully placed into permanent housing. The case management is a supportive housing measure to mitigate challenges that may occur or cause potential instability in their housing. All of these programs and efforts I just mentioned can and will overlap. For example, our outreach team might engage a youth in the community and refer them to our engagement youth services for additional assessments. This assessment may determine that this youth is a perfect candidate for multiple programs like our Youth Build program for educational services, our transitional housing to get them off the streets, and connection to our milieu for additional wraparound services. The youth can be engaged in all three service points at one time and getting a consistent client-centered approach where all staff working together with the youth. Again, 200 adults, 200 is solvable if, as a community, we work together. Thank you.
Karen. So, lastly, how can you help? Because we had to leave with that, right? We certainly would appreciate the continued support of our services and prevention supports for young adults. The outcomes are good when we do this work. Kids do go on to school, they get jobs, and they become productive members of our community. Keep young people in mind when discussing strategies to end homelessness, because homelessness comes in all ages. What we found out at the summit is they're even younger than high school age. There are very young adults who end up on the streets. Continuing supporting the annual Mayor's Holiday Fest, it's a blast. I think everybody was there, had a great time, and thank you, everybody who helped on this. And participation in our council, at future summits, and in community discussions to raise awareness and to help us create the system so every part of the community, every agency, organization, school, and community member knows how to use the system to get a young person help, because creating the system is what will work. And when we all know how that system works, it will be easier to provide the services. So, I thank you for listening, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions? Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a comment, and that's why Counselor Elliott and I made this very important motion, and I thank you for your patience to hear it. I know that it was important to a lot of us because you did have fundraisers to address this cause. Going to our meetings once a month, we do hear this, so I thought this was great to share this knowledge with everybody here, those that are watching. The youth of our city are a very important component in this city. They're our future, and it's not, and there are a lot of youth that you think they have a good home and they don't. They're out in the street, and it's very, very difficult to hear that and accept it. So, when we know that there's a program available that helps, such as CTI, we just wanted to make this motion to share all this information and let the public know that it's not going unheard. We are having a facility, namely CTI, that is doing something about it. So, you did a wonderful presentation, and I'm very proud of CTI and all the good work that they do. As my colleagues and Vesna as well, we're on the board of directors. I just wanted to share all this. So, thank you for coming out of your way, coming up here, because it is important. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Karen, I have a couple of questions, but you know, Counsel Mercia is correct. The work is important, and Counsel Kennedy, when you started, you know, the fundraising, I mean, we need money to do it. You talked about 200 students, 200 young people homeless. Are these people without home, permanently without home? Because I did notice at the high school, there were times I would call them the intermittent homeless. They were thrown out because of a boyfriend and the home, some reason, but there were those that lived in a home for a while, thrown out, lived, thrown out.
That is very often what happens. It can be episodic or situational, and it can happen for periods of time or for long periods of time. And I think homelessness is exhibited differently in young people because sometimes they are going from friend to friend to friend, but that's not stable housing and they are considered homeless.
Okay. I mean, do you have anybody working with the high school to...
Yes.
If...
Yes, we do.
Those young people identified...
Yep. We are working with the high school closely. The homeless liaison and another staff person are on our committee to plan this work. We've worked around cases with the high school, and we're working with, I believe it's Youth Harbors that's in the high school. We're working with that staff as well to help find the housing that young people need.
Okay. I think that's important. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the work you're doing too. Any way they could work out a partnership with the vision right across the street from the high school, they're not at full capacity, and you know, maybe they'd be willing to lend a hand for temporary housing. I mean, we gave them a break coming into the city. They could return the favor while they're...
Maybe that should be on my How You Can Help slide to help us connect for some housing there, because it's a great location. It's a great location, and we certainly are looking at any and all alternatives that will work for young people. And getting to school is an issue. We want to keep them in school.
So, maybe we could reach out to them.
That's a great idea.
Any partnership we could do with them.
Counsel Noon, then Counsel Conway.
Thank you, Mayor. What are the age range of youth in terms of homelessness, and what's the leading cause of it?
So, you said the age range?
Yeah.
So, the age range that we'll be serving is 16 to 24.
Okay.
And you had another part of that question?
Leading cause of youth homelessness?
The cost?
The leading cause of it, yes?
Oh, leading cause, cause. You mean, some of that, I mean, I listed kind of some of them. Some of it is aging out of systems.
Right, right.
Some of that is just, you know, kind of their social supports fraying as the mayor had said, you know, talking about, you know, relationships within the family and kicking kids out or youth out. So, some of those, mental health and substance use, those are kind of the leading reasons for homelessness for young adults.
I think I do concur that if we addressed this youth homelessness at an earlier stage, it certainly prevented from turning into a chronic homelessness. So, the work that you've done, CTI and the team done, has really have a great impact as forward, you know, work that you've done, so we appreciate it. I think that I, my understanding that you are planning to renovate it, Dutton Street property, turn it into the Assessment Center for Youth?
That's right. We are planning to renovate it. It was an office building for all of our administrative staff, so it's not really set up, you know, as well as it could be. It's set up for Youth Build a little bit, but what we want to do is build out and make it a better place for young people to come in, get their assessment, meet with their caseworker. We're looking at putting a commercial kitchen in there because we have a culinary arts program. But it is really just to make it more workable with this population. So, when we left, we didn't do a lot of renovations when we left it with our administrative staff. So, it's time now to really take a look at it and try to make a safe, welcoming space for young people that they'll want to come to, because if they want to come, they'll come in and identify themselves.
I noticed that Carl speak of the preventative work that you've done, some of the partner that you have had or continue to have, I think the city is one of them. So, what can we do aside from what you list as far as, you know, continue to go to the mayor, you know, fundraising events and so on and so forth, so what else can we, the city, do as other partner in helping to make your preventative work a success?
Well, I think one of the things that just happened, helping us identify housing, it's hard to find housing in this city. It's tight and it's expensive. So, when there are opportunities that you can, you see come about, that would be incredibly helpful to get them to us and we can take a look at them. We have placed young people in apartments, we've doubled up in apartments, things like that, but we're always looking for those kinds of things, so that would be helpful. And I really do think spreading the word is huge. People have to know how to enter the system. You all know how complicated most of our systems are. Even if you're in the field, how do you get mental health services? You know, it's a challenge. How do you navigate all of our social services? So, pointing them to Amanda and Carl and Michael and me will, I think, help us kind of direct people to the right place.
Well, thank you for the important work you've done for the youth homelessness in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Counsel Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Counsel Mercier and Counsel Elliott for putting this motion on. I think it's extremely important to help educate the community exactly the type of work that they're doing. And Karen, it's you and your staff, a great presentation. Truly appreciate that. You know, I think that CTI has certainly been a part of the fabric of the city of Lowell, and not just Lowell, but also the surrounding community for a number of years for the incredible work that they have done in so many different fields, not just creating housing, but also as we see with the homeless and education. And the other thing that I think is extremely important too is the fact that you have tremendous and you reach out to have tremendous partnerships, and I think that's when we really maximize the resources for the entire city and certainly help out in the youth. So, again, I want to, I applaud, I applaud you and your staff for doing a great job for a number of years. Thank you very much.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two things. One is the, what is the capacity right now, the number of units that we have for homeless youth? And maybe it's better expressed in the number of beds, but I mean, what is, what's the capacity that we have right now currently for that?
Capacity as far as the program that we just talked about just now?
Like, how many beds are available?
Well, I mean, there's the Lowell Transitional Living Center that offers, you know, housing. So those are available for youth to go to. We're in the process of identifying our transitional program, as I mentioned, where we'll have some units that we can move in, but outside of those, those kind of two, there's not a lot of housing opportunities besides emergency shelter beds.
Okay. What's the, you know what the average age is at the transitional? Are they older people than?
Yes, yeah. I mean, Amanda might be able to speak more to that, but, you know, there, I mean, you can, I can speak more, but I'm on the data on who they're seeing as far as age groups.
For the Lowell Transitional?
Yeah.
Lowell Transitional is seeing all ages. So last time that I had a conversation with Lowell Transitional House, it was indicated that they were serving about nine youth at the time, so those are youths that are aged between 18 and 24. So, but it goes 18 to upwards of 60-plus, depending on what the need is.
And there's a pretty good age mix there?
Yep.
Okay.
And if that's, how many did you say, eight?
Eight or nine, yeah.
Eight or nine out of, I think they have like 90 beds, so it's not a lot of youth going there.
Right.
And many young adults report they don't want to go there. It's not a place for them, they don't feel comfortable, there are more older people, they're afraid, so it's a challenge.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
The only other thing, Mr. Mayor, to it is, no matter who the mayor is, the mayor gets all the credit for the Mayor's Holiday Fest for homeless youth, but really, it's the working committee that does all of the work, as you know.
No question.
And as I know. And one of the key members of that committee happens to be here tonight, and that's John Geyer, and I would just want to point that out. I'd mention the others on the committee, but they're not here. John Geyer's here, so.
Oh, John, thank you for, no, Yeoman's work, absolutely. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues. This is clearly has created the dialogue which we had expected, and Carl and Karen mentioned it. It was to spread the word to those out there that need services and getting into the system to get that help. It's a growing problem. CTI, as they usually are, I try to get ahead of problems like this, and they need help, and we respond. So I think it's important that we, as Carl mentioned, it's not a thousand, but 200 is a significant number. They're on the streets, and this program helping get off the streets, so they're not a problem or burden, or can get on the right path for decades to come. So thank you for taking time, and I do know that there is, we're talking about housing, is there not in the future a plan to try to acquire some temporary housing to get them off the street until they can transition into something?
Well, we may. I mean, that's part of this planning process, where everyone's involved, including the city. So we want people at the table to help us figure out what is needed as a solution. It could be scattered sites, like we're using for a lot of our homeless families. It could be a small, you know, duplex. It could be a lot of things. That's what will come from our planning process, and we will certainly work with the city on those issues, as they, as it becomes clear what we do need. You know, some of it's mediating with families, trying to get kids back with their families, and sometimes that takes an outside mediator to try to, you know, mitigate some of the issues that have come up. So it's, there's all kinds of things. We have to figure out for this city what is, what will work the best.
Thank you.
You have something?
On the transitional housing, I guess I just want to acknowledge, the city has actually been very supportive of this effort over the past couple of years. We've been working with the Continuum of Care to submit funding applications through HUD. We received funding last year, we just heard today that we have renewal of that funding, and we have some hopes that we'll get some additional funding through HUD that will expand our capacity to either lease some transitional, additional transitional housing, or potentially to acquire a site that we could, you know, again, continue to concentrate our services and do a more comprehensive, thorough wraparound job with the young people. So we're keeping our fingers crossed.
Further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been asked if, if we could take Communication 6.9 out of order, because it lists the number of people who've been reappointed to the Hunger and Homeless Commission, need a motion to take that out of order. Now, Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon. These people are Elizabeth Higgins, Brent Rourke, Gretchen Gilmore, Nicholas Nicholson, Dan O'Connor, Susan Smith, Tammy Dubois, Diane Waddell, and Jeffrey Bryant. And I believe that, we have one more. Deborah Savigny. Okay. Need a motion to accept and place on file?
So moved. Second.
Counselor Kennedy?
Second.
I guess they left. Okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Bryant, I'm sorry. Want to come up and thank you, sir, for your service?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Bryant, and I'm the executive director for the Open Pantry in downtown Lowell. And I first want to really thank you all for appointing me to the commission, and give you just an extremely brief introduction to us. The Open Pantry is the oldest pantry in Lowell. We were founded in 1982, and we're one of the three largest ones. I think people are very surprised when they find out that last year, we actually fed 23,441 people at our pantry, and we also served 1,300-some-odd people, seniors in Lowell housing. So it's a lot of work, but it's an honor to do it. And so I think that anytime we have a chance to work with others, we're happy to do it, and so being on the commission is a good thing. I thank you.
Thank you for your work, sir. Thank you.
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under motion responses, we have the Hamilton Canal Garage update. Counselor Mercier?
The garage update. I have a question about, in December of 2017, we did say that the garage would feature approximately 980 spaces at a cost of $36.4 million in the Hamilton Canal District. So it seems that they have to reduce that because of the cost. So what is the final parking reduction numbers at this point? Do we know from 980 to what?
We don't know yet. That's what, that's part of what the new project manager will be working together with the construction, with the construction manager at risk process. So there will be some redesign, and some of those were pointed out in the memo. The numbers, obviously, we want to keep as many of the spaces and not reduce spaces, if at all possible.
Sure.
But we don't have that number yet, Counselor.
So when we do have them, can we be kept aware of this?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the cost as well, because we're thinking $35 million, and I don't know where we're going with it.
Right. What we, absolutely, and that's part of the process is to, as we go through, to, with the CM at risk process, to have a better handle on the cost.
Yes.
As well as more competition for the construction. But it's critical, because we know, as I said last week, you know, we're going to work with the budget that the council has approved.
Sure.
And the, what came in from just two bidders was just
That's right.
Way out of whack.
Well, thank you for your report, and just keep us aware.
Absolutely.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mayor. I do share Counselor Mercier's comment. I think it's important that we be kept, you know, updated, and I know the manager's indicated she will do that with regard to any redesign of the garage, as well as the costs associated with it, and the timeline of, you know, so that we know whether or not it's going to meet the timeline that, you know, we're looking forward to meet. I'm confident that it will, but the update certainly will be helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you, the manager. When the bids came in, last time we built the garage, I remember they were talking about numbers like 32, is it 32,000 per spot, or something like that?
The last time we built a garage?
Yeah.
That was the early?
So this one seems to be like 45.
Oh, this, this price was way out of whack. It was over, it was over $50,000. Nobody would...
Is there any reason why we could figure out why there was a jump up?
Well, there are a number of, and some of them we mentioned in the report. The design bid build process, which isn't as favored today, we did not get, because of the risk to the construction company, we didn't get as many bids. I think we had 75 that showed interest, and only two bid. And so in this climate, there was just put in a high price and see if it sticks. That could have been one of the reasons, but, and I know Craig is here with some of the information based. I think the last garage we did was the early garage, and that was a little bit different, because there were costs, you know, there was eminent domain, there were moving costs and a number of costs, but, and there's also retail in that garage. So Craig, I don't know there, you can speak to that, as far as the last time we built a garage?
Yeah. Craig Thomas, deputy director for the Department of Planning and Development. It's worth considering in broad strokes how we think with the pricing of these garages, and to compare them most reasonably, we talk about the price per space. The last time we did this, we were just around the 30,000, over the $30,000 per space number. Typically, what the cost estimates that we received and what other folks have built ends up in the 35, trending towards $40,000 space number. This was actually a little bit over 50. And so there's just no reason that we, no way for us to justify that, and we needed to redesign it to find a way to hit that budget, where the space, the cost per space is in line with what folks are building, what we can afford, and what's reasonable to, for the investment of public dollars.
Did we reach out to UMass Lowell, Adam Backy, and see what the last two garages they built?
We did, and we'll provide you with this. I can just tell you quickly, they built a garage, the North Garage, in 2013 for $20,300, and that was, in today's cost, it would be 25.7, and today's cost, it would be about $40,000 a space. And then the other garage they built, the South Garage, in 14, 2014, $20,200. Today's cost would be 24.6, that was 765 spaces. Now it would have been 32,000 a space. So those are, just if we looked at them in today's numbers.
Yeah. Okay. And does any of that help us? Like, does the last one they built over at North, South Campus, like, I know they, I guess they didn't bid on it, but can we...
Right. We'd have to know more about the exact layout, what they're doing. I mean, one of the challenges we have with this garage, it's next to a canal, and because of the topography, you know, we're running into issues as far as the slurry wall, or not a slurry wall, how you shore up a garage when you're right next to water. So I think those are some variables, but we did hire Dorn Whittier to be our OPM. They're working already on this project, and coming, you know, to the table with ideas as far as what we can do differently in terms of construction. So Craig, I know you may have something to add, but...
The only thing I'd add to, in response to Counselor Leahy's question, is what we can learn from UMass Lowell is the interest from the firms that can do this work. And the way we chose to try the first time to procure this, firms were not interested. They were interested to learn more, but as they determined whether or not they were willing to move forward and put in a bid, we ended up with a very small pool of bidders. So this new way, the CM at Risk, similar pathway to Lowell High School, we've already had folks coming to us who have done these kinds of garages, like the folks who've done UMass Lowell Garage, who did not bid last time, who are going to participate this time around.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kennedy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, too. Why did people drop out? Why did that happen?
So as you see in the memo, we did quite a lot of debriefing with the folks we have under contract, the garage designer, Walker, and reaching out through the networks that we have to learn more about this. And it really is just the case, from everyone we talked to, that there are two factors that sort of conspired to make this really difficult. One, garages, there are very few folks that do the critical part of the work, the precast work, which are the big pieces you see brought in to build typical garages. So depending on the timelines and interest and availability for those folks, it really restricts the interest of other bidders, because they're partnering with those same firms. And so if there's only one available, the amount of folks to partner with goes down as well. But we also just heard that people don't really do this design bid build process anymore, especially for things like garages that can have a lot of parts built in different phases. And so as opposed to a building where it's really hard sometimes to break it into different pieces, people feel more comfortable doing that with a garage, which leads to a lot of interest in this process.
When you, if you looked at the University of Lowell, did you also look at other communities? I got to think that there were other communities that have probably built garages recently, even though we haven't. Did you look at those and how those prices went for those communities?
Yeah, we did look around. There's not a lot of people that are building garages, but most of the garages that are built right now are being built privately, and that's something that's been discussed for this, and especially for Parcel 1 in particular. We've talked, the council, about putting out an RFP for a private garage on Parcel 1. But where we are with this garage, especially with the agreement with the National Park, makes it a little harder to contemplate that pathway. But it's, this, the place that we are in today, 2018, 2019, with this design bid build structure, people really aren't going in that, aren't following that pathway anymore. It's either private pathway or the design build pathway, from what we've heard from talking to our partners.
So was the problem that we just, we just went about it incorrectly, or the way we were going about it was antiquated by today's standards?
Antiquated's a strong word. I would think that we had...
I agree it's a strong word, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. And it's, the hope was that this would work. It's something that folks are more used to. It's more common in the city of Lowell especially, having done the design bid build, as folks have, we're all learning with the Lowell High School process. We have a lot of additional steps, we have some additional costs for this OPM, but those additional costs and steps can help us recoup time, especially time and money going forward, which is important for this project. But also, it just opened up this new world, the folks have said, we're only going to participate if you go down that pathway, and that was a surprise to us, frankly.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All set? Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have polling location accessibility. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, first of all, I want to thank Etta for this, this report. I think it's, it's excellent. It, it covers so many different areas that we talked about. I'm fortunate enough to be on the Commission on Disability, and on that commission, we talk about a number of different things. And one of the, one of the issues was, was the polling stations, and I think that's why we wanted to get an update on what was going on, and if there was any changes that would be coming up, or anything additional that we might, that we might be doing that could make things more effective and efficient for anybody with disabilities. And I think what's extremely important, and I congratulate you, Etta, that, that she does show up to the, to the meetings on the Commission on Disability, and I think when you, when you do that, you hear it firsthand. You know, we might hear, we might think we know what we're doing. However, once we sit down and we talk to individuals that have to live with this on a day-to-day basis, I think that's when our eyes open up, and I think it makes it, it makes us aware that we have to be very careful in how we handle things. If there's anything, Etta, that you would like to add, are you all set with that?
I am. Thank you for the motion, and thank you for kind of giving me the opportunity to showcase the partnership that I've been able to create with the, the city's Commission on Disability, and I hope that our partnership can really serve as a model for other city departments. The commission has been excellent in terms of really sharing the voice that's not always heard here in the city, and also to sponsor some really important projects for our polling locations, including the acquisition of handicap-accessible voting booths. So thank you for the opportunity for me to talk about it, and again, I hope other departments will follow our lead and partner up with the Commission on Disability.
Thank you, Etta.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All set? All right, thank you. Next, we have mandatory voter purge. Madam Manager?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council, Etta has prepared a report regarding the mandatory voter purge. This can cause a lot of concern and anxiety when this has to be... This can cause a lot of concern and anxiety when this has to be done, and, and I think she's laid out in the report what the steps are, and, and, you know, we, we want to use this opportunity to let people know they're going to be notified, again, that they're being purged, so, in, in steps that they can take if there is some kind of mistake. But with your permission, if, Etta, if you could walk through the number of voters this year that have to be purged from the voter rolls, and what the steps are, and why?
So, this is actually something that we did, we're going to be doing every two years. It's a process that we commenced last year, in collaboration with the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. So, every two years, if there's people that have not voted, signed a petition, or just been active at all in any way, shape, or form on the voter rolls, then we're required to remove those persons. This is to really ensure the integrity of our voter list, and I'm really happy to report that our voter list has never been as accurate as, as it is right now. And one of the reasons why our list is so accurate is because we are following the state process of removing inactive or really stagnant voters, is a better term to use. So, about, a little over, last year, we inactivated or deleted about eight thousand inactive voters, and this year, we're down to under four thousand, and our number is going to continue to shrink, and that's because with the Motor Voter Initiative, where people are updating their voter information at the Registry of Motor Vehicles, and people are updating their own information online, the voter list is now kind of self-populated with really accurate information. So, for the just under four thousand people that we have not heard from since before two thousand and sixteen, we will be removing them, we'll be sending everyone a trilingual postcard that has instructions on how somebody can re-enroll themselves. But an interesting piece is we're using forwarding mail services on this mailing, and I'm working with our printers to make sure that if this, if people moved out of the, out of the city, or if people moved out of the state, they're now going to really be notified that they were still on our rolls here in Lowell, and now they're going to be removed. What usually happens is we get some calls, some people kind of come back to us that didn't realize that they hadn't voted, but other people, and last year, we had a lot of calls where people thanked us for letting them know and taking them off, because they were a little concerned that they had moved to Florida and registered to vote somewhere else. So this is required by state law, but it's a really great practice to ensure the integrity of our voter list here in the city.
Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Etta. Can you just tell me if, say, we have individuals that haven't voted in two biennial, biennial elections, and they show up to a booth, they're residents, they just haven't, they haven't returned their census, I understand, but they did take the time at any given election to, to go and vote. What is the process? Oh, first, first of all, my second question would be, if I got to renew my license, and I'm not sure, I think I'm registered, but I re-register, are they told at the registry at that point in time, "Oh, you're already registered," or not?
So, to speak to your first question, we never turn any voters away here in the city of Lowell, that's why we have provisional ballots available at every election, and so, any person that doesn't appear on the voter list is allowed the opportunity to vote by a provisional ballot. That means the person fills out the ballot, instead of putting the ballot into the tabulator, they actually send the ballot back to City Hall, and we research out every single one of those ballots. You might recall that after our last election, we had approximately five hundred of those provisional ballots that the staff and I researched out after Election Day, and we were really excited that we accepted quite a few of those ballots, and were able to adjust the results accordingly. To speak to your second question, especially now since the secretary's automatic voter registration initiative that's underway, although it's not completely implemented at this point, a majority of people updating their information at the registry are being reprocessed as a voter, and that comes into our computer daily. So what we do is we receive those notifications, and then we send out a notice saying that we've updated somebody's information. So, we, and that happens constantly, so we're accepting a few hundred voter applications daily. Most of them are through the RMV, are duplicates, just with updates. The system, as they have it at the registry now, cannot look at our computer, but we get all of the notifications electronically from them.
Thank you very much.
All set. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have medical marijuana revenue. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Managers. If I could have Connor, Connors, to do a brief overview of that respond, and I will have some questions after that.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to note upfront that there's a Scrivener's Error on the agenda. This is not related to medical marijuana, this is for the recreational marijuana revenue and the tax associated with that. So the report details the, some research that we did into the matter in setting up a process or a way for the Council to dedicate a portion of this new revenue, and appropriate it towards a specific purpose, namely, facility improvements. And one of the things that we discovered was that the Municipal Modernization Act relaxed a lot of the restrictions for both establishing stabilization funds, special purpose stabilization funds, and also the types of revenue and the percentages that can be dedicated to those. So one of the things that we're suggesting in, in this report in, in response to the motion was, the, the Council, if they so chose, could elect to appropriate a portion not less than twenty-five percent into a special purpose stabilization fund after it's created, and that, that funding would automatically go into the fund, and they could dedicate a purpose such as municipal facility improvements, and then that money would be deposited in the special purpose stabilization fund. It would accrue interest year over year, would be held over from fiscal year to fiscal year, and then could be appropriated by affirmative vote of the Council, either in the budget or at any time during the year when the need arose for improvements to municipal facilities. Another couple other noteworthy items are that that purpose, you have to try it for at least three years by the rules of the statute, but the Council could elect at any time thereafter to change the, the purpose of the fund, so if, if municipal buildings are all improved by that, that time, the Council could elect to dedicate that, that revenue towards another legal purpose. So that, we would look for a motion of the Council tonight, and then we could work with the Law Department to prepare the proper vote.
Thank you, Connors. The report is very detailed, and I appreciate that report very much. I know we all agree that our municipal building in need of improvement. I think we're gonna need more than three years to do that. I think devoting twenty-five percent of our revenue from recreational marijuana would be the right things to do. That way, we have money somewhere to take care of the improvement of our municipal building, rather than keep on increasing taxes to our resident. I think if we were to do that, we'd be first in, in the Commonwealth, and we're first in a lot of things, so why not be first on this, is put aside twenty-five percent of our revenue from the recreational marijuana for that municipal building improvement. So, with that said, I would request that we create a special purpose stabilization fund, just for that, that twenty-five percent to start with. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kennedy, then, Counselor Mercia?
Just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Say, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, on the motion? So, the motion calls for twenty-five percent to be dedicated for a certain purpose. If in year two, we don't have any estimates of what twenty-five percent is going to be, do we?
That's correct. We do not.
Yeah. So, in year two, if we determine that twenty-five percent was not enough, would we be able to increase that to fifty percent or to forty percent, or?
We would have to double-check with the Department of Revenue if the restriction on the three years applies to the percentage, but it's my understanding at this point that the percentage could be changed at any time. It's just that the fund itself.
Yeah.
Must be in existence for three years.
Okay. So the answer to my question is, yeah, you could, you think, you're pretty sure that you could go up to fifty percent or seventy-five percent or whatever.
Yes.
If, if need be, if that was the will of the Council at that time.
And it's a minimum of twenty-five percent.
Right. Yes. Thank you.
All set. Any further discussion? Counselor Leahy? Sure. Before we start dedicating all this money, shouldn't we have a discussion on where, where does the money go? To the general fund, right?
The three percent tax goes to the general fund. That's correct.
And?
The community impact fee has different restraint on that.
So, I mean, you know, I mean, what does that mean, fixing up building? Just money goes to repairing, that's it? Or does it go to, you know, hiring another custodian, because that could keep the upkeep of a building too? So, I mean, I think we should.
I think that's up to the council.
Slow down a little bit.
I think it would be up to the council.
Wait until we see where our needs are. I think we should get a report back from your office, you know, I mean, should it go into alongside of municipal buildings, but, you know, we're trying to build up staff for lands and buildings, and DPW and stuff like that. We're trying to build a new police station, fire station, I mean, I think this is, you know, obviously, we're gonna keep trying to maintain the, the buildings, and we're gonna put as much money there, but.
Well, as I said, Connor said that this is new under the Municipal Modernization Act.
Right.
We can look into it. I think it's up to the Council, how the Council wants to word where this would go, and we can.
Right.
Come back with some recommendations for the Council.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to kind of slow down a little bit and get some recommendations on what you think, you know, maybe some projections might be, and what you think, where the money should go, and, you know, we've got a lot of things on our plate right now, so, to take twenty-five percent off the table right now and dedicate it is a little early in the game.
I think we probably, we probably have no way of projecting what the revenue will be.
Right.
For marijuana sales and recreational marijuana, and therefore what the tax will be until we're underway. But I guess the only thing we can go on is the EMG report that shows hundreds of millions of dollars of work that needs to be done on municipal, I mean, that we can, we can ascertain as far as the work that needs to be done on, on both municipal and school buildings, but.
Right. But we've still got a plan for the future for the police department, fire department buildings, so, I don't know. Like, to see where we are. I'm not sure if I want to vote tonight on dedicating money right away. All set. Counselor Elliott, Kennedy, then, Millenizer?
Well, I, I don't disagree with Counselor Leahy, so maybe it might make some sense to send this to the Cannabis Control Subcommittee meeting to have a full discussion on, maybe, I think you made a good point, we, we haven't received a nickel yet, so maybe, you know, priorities do change, and, so I, I just think it warrants a more thorough discussion on exactly how much we're talking about, and, you know, what the other priorities are.
Motion to refer it?
So, yeah, I was gonna make that motion, not that I'm opposed to any of it, but anything, just, let's, let's explore it and see exactly, I mean, I'm still not one hundred percent comfortable with, with the receipts and what goes where, and what has to be allocated for a specific purpose, so I think it'd be helpful certainly for me, anyway, to get a better understanding once the money does, the revenue does start, you know, coming into the city, so, there's no objection. I'd make that motion.
Wait a second for that. Okay. Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you. On the substitute motion, I guess, I, I like Counselor Noon's motion for this reason. First of all, I, I don't know why we would send it to a subcommittee, because nobody knows how much money we're talking about. We don't know if we're talking, what is twenty-five percent? Is it gonna be a hundred thousand dollars? Is it gonna be three million dollars? Nobody knows that. But what we do know is that the schools need a lot of work. And another thing that we all know, or that we should admit, is that we've been talking about that for years and years, and the list of repairs that need to be done in those schools remains the same. So there's a lot. So what I like about the motion, more than anything else, is that it is a, it's a commitment to, it, it helps sustain the commitment to fixing the schools, and I think that that's important. And if down the road, after a year or two, we find out that it's more money than what's needed, or not enough money, then we can tinker with the amount, and, and maybe up the amount from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, or, or do something different. But, you know, if this is good for three years, twenty-five percent, I, I think that, I think we need to make that kind of commitment to repair in the schools, and it will, it'll help remind members of the City Council and future City Councils that we need to pay attention to those schools going forward, and that we're in a hole because of it. I happened to be out in Tingsborough last night, and they have just three schools, and their schools are all in good condition. And so, they're in a position where they can do preventative maintenance on their schools. They don't have to take care of deferred maintenance. That's a position that we would like to be into someday, but we're not going to be in that position two years, or three years, or five years from now. But it's, it's something that I think we should strive for, and I think that this motion is in the spirit of that, and I also think that twenty-five percent is, is the minimum. I, I think the motion's good and should pass as it is. Thank you.
Counselor Millenizer?
Thank you, Mayor. I, when I read the report, I was actually quite pleased that the recommendation was coming from the administration to do just that, and, you know, I commend Counselor Noon for bringing the idea forward, and I think it is somewhat of a trailblazing idea to actually do what is recommended here. So, again, I respect Counselor Leahy's position, but at the end of the day, I think what we're doing is just kicking the can down the road, and we actually know that this program or this source of funds, even though we don't know the dollar amount, could be set up sooner than later. So what we're asking for tonight is to have the proper vote brought forward in order to set up this special purpose stabilization fund. We can certainly, as part of that, get the information that Counselor Leahy and Counselor Elliott is requesting, but, again, I'm prepared to vote for this, as, as was originally brought forward, to actually refer it back to the Solicitor's Office to have the vote drawn up now and not wait, because I don't, I don't want to be here three months from now talking about the Collins Report, and we still don't have any dedicated source of funds to do anything, so, I'm prepared to vote for tonight.
Counselor Leahy? Sure. I just want to add that, you know, I, I agree with the motion, I like his motion, but, you know, some of the buildings that our firefighters are in are deplorable, and the police station has been a mess for years, and we haven't done anything about that. The, a lot of the issues in the schools can be done, and it doesn't have to be money over there, it just has to be efficient work schedules. So, and we've been arguing that for years, and we don't make any changes, the schools do not have to be in the, in the, you know, in the condition they're in if we had better work schedules. You can't go into a school when there's five hundred kids in there and do repairs. And until we start doing repairs on our schools at night, when they're empty, and we get more work done, that's when we're gonna fix these schools. It doesn't take a lot of money, it takes common sense. And, again, you know, what I've seen over at the police station and the fire department, you know, we're gonna run out of things dedicating this money. It's money that goes to the general fund and make repairs as needed. Counselor Noon, then, Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think really the request was just that. Counselor Leahy spoke to the need for the municipal building that include a firehouse, a police department, and the school, not just the school, the firehouse. We brought it up, there's a motion that was a respond a while back, too. The firehouse, the police department, all the municipal building in the city. I didn't go, I didn't ask for fifty percent or a hundred percent, the recommendation reasonable, that twenty-five percent to start off with. And I don't think three years is gonna fix all those lists that are need of improvement in the city. And we need to do something. We just stop talking about it. Let's do something. We have a list that need to get done. And why not set up this account? I don't see anything wrong with that. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Twenty-five percent of the marijuana revenue go into a stabilization fund for the repair of a municipal building. Just because we're saying the word municipal, I don't know what that means, except that it doesn't say municipal equals school building. Municipal is fire department building, police building, it's a municipal building, not necessarily meaning a school building, so, I know that a lot of the fire stations are So, I know that a lot of the fire stations are in deplorable condition, but we're referring to a municipal building. And that's what I thought it meant, that it means every municipal building. So, I understand your commitment to the fire department, but that is a municipal building. But, so I approve of this 25%. I don't have a problem with making that happen through a vote.
Councilor Conway.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad that the clarification came up, that it's not just the schools. Because I think what's been brought up here is the fact that you take a look at the police station. I took a tour of the police station. And to be honest with you, I think if we owned it and as an individual, we would probably be condemned. It's awful. It is an awful place. Conditions are terrible over there. And needless to say, that's why I think that, you know, that particular area certainly needs a lot of work. And that's why I brought that motion up to take a look at the courthouse on Heard Street as a possibility. Because that place can't last much longer. So, as long as, as long as it's not just for, just for schools. And obviously, the schools need a lot of work. All of them do with the roofs and the heating systems and so forth. But as long as it's going to be all the municipal buildings, then I don't have a problem with the 25% for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, if they don't want to send, you don't want to send a subcommittee, that's fine with me. I just don't happen to know every element of the law. So, as I read this report, it's going, by statute, according to your memo, we set up a stabilization, but it's not, you can't earmark it for any particular purpose if I read the third, the third paragraph. So, we can establish the percentage. But payments for the general purpose of stabilization fund established under Section 40 may be dedicated for stabilization funds, but they're not earmarked for a particular purpose. Correct?
So, to address your point, Councilor, the, I think what you're referring to is sort of the general, the general rule for municipal revenues, and that's Chapter 44, Section 53, that unless there is a special law that provides for something to be dedicated to a certain purpose or set into a special revenue fund, for example, it's a revenue of the general fund. However, what we're pointing out here is new legislation for municipal modernization that allows for the special purpose. So, it fits within the carve out of the other statute to be dedicated to a particular purpose. And this is part of what was relaxed during the Municipal Modernization Act, was to allow greater flexibility for, you know, the appropriation of revenues to particular purposes.
So, there won't be an earmark for that? Is that what we're saying? Or are we saying we're setting up the stabilization fund specifically for repairs to the schools? Because I'm confused. I'm hearing one thing or the next.
Municipal buildings.
Okay, so most of the discussion was of schools. So, that makes sense. I'm fine.
Let's try the motion. Can we have a roll call on the motion by Mr. Noon?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is a point of order, a point of clarification. So, we'll vote on the substitute motion first and if the substitute motion fails.
I believe it was withdrawn.
That's fine. We'll withdraw it.
Okay.
Roll call will be on the original motion. Mayor Samares.
Yes.
Councilor Sorillo. Councilor Conway.
Yes.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next, we have downtown pedestrian crossing, Councilor Leahy, Councilor Noon.
Sure, thank you. I know Natasha's here. If she could come up and give us an overview of the report. We, last night at the downtown neighborhood meeting, we had a good discussion on all the intersections and there's a lot of concerns. And so, why don't we start with you, if you could?
Sure, I'll try to be brief. I think everybody's aware there's, it can be difficult to be a pedestrian walking in downtown Laurel. There are a number of intersections that are not particularly safe. One that springs to mind is Bridge and Prescott and East Merrimack, obviously. There are, I went out and spent some time timing those intersections and looking at how much time a pedestrian had to step off the curb or get across the crosswalk. And in some cases, you have a second or two to step off the curb before turning traffic is able to, well, you're in the crosswalk and you have a walk sign. So, I think that there's definitely some tweaks that need to be made to the timing. My main recommendation, so, you know, there are, just for the people at home, there are two ways to time pedestrian crossings at signalized intersections. Concurrent pedestrian crossing means that when the traffic going straight ahead has a green arrow, you're able to walk. So, obviously, turning vehicles can still turn through the crosswalk. They're supposed to look and yield to pedestrians, and that doesn't always happen. Pedestrians also need to look and see if turning vehicles are coming. Even though they have the right of way in the crosswalk, you're still a pedestrian and a vehicle. Obviously, you want to try to avoid stepping out in front of one. The other option would be an exclusive pedestrian phase, which is if you have ever crossed at Arcand and Dutton, that there's an exclusive pedestrian phase there, which seems to work really well. It is a very big intersection. And so, you have a good 20 seconds to cross the intersection, but you do have to wait for all of the traffic to get their turn at a green light. And then you can cross the intersection and everybody has a red and everybody stops. That can cause a lot of congestion in cities. And in most of the time in cities, you, to keep a platoon moving and to reduce traffic congestion, you use concurrent pedestrian phasing. A new, sort of a newer idea and one I've talked about before here is a leading pedestrian interval called an LPI, which basically means when one light is, that was green turns red, there's usually a second or two to clear the intersection before the next through movement gets a green light. So, you add three seconds to that and it gives pedestrians five seconds to, or three to five seconds to start crossing the crosswalk. With the idea being that when the pedestrian is already in the crosswalk, the car sees them and doesn't turn and hit them. Obviously, that's not foolproof. Again, you have driver responsibility to be paying attention, pedestrian responsibility to be paying attention. But, and that is my predominant recommendation, is that we look at re-timing the lights and including a leading pedestrian interval at all of the crosswalks. That would be for the two, it's very safe to cross at Palmer and East Merrimack. That's not a problem. But Central and East Merrimack, Bridge, Prescott and East Merrimack and Dutton and Market are the three predominantly dangerous intersections. I have heard some complaints about Market and Prescott and Central that there's an exclusive head there. Generally, people are safe crossing, but some people have said they still have issues with turning cars, even though there's no right turn on red for several movements. So, that's kind of a long-winded explanation. I said I'd be brief, but that's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I think there were a lot of concerns last night at the meeting. And I think we'd be willing to try that. I think, you know, we had this discussion years ago when Jeff Speck was here. I think we might have changed a lot of the light sequences then, or if I'm correct. But, so, I think this would be a good thing to try. The biggest intersection that everybody seems to talk about is Market and Dutton.
And Dutton.
You know, people just don't pay attention. They just go right on red. They drive at you. So, that's probably the most dangerous one.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that's a place where there's, there's an, since it's two lanes in most directions and there's some queuing space, I think preventing, putting up no right turn on red signs certainly should make it safer for pedestrians, assuming drivers obey those signs. And I think with the leading pedestrian interval and no right turn on red, I think that that should greatly improve pedestrian safety there. I think it's also something we need to put in place, let people get used to it and then reevaluate it after a time period. I said 60 days in my motion response. I think that's probably reasonable. Most of the traffic changes we make in the city, we try to evaluate for six, after 60 days or four 60 days. I'm sure pedestrians in the city will let us know if they feel safer or if they're seeing any improvement. And I would appreciate that feedback. So, but yeah, I agree, that's not a, I've tried crossing there as well. And it's not a particularly safe feeling intersection. You can cross safely, but you just have to be very aware. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Next, we have petitions. Petition response, Boilston Street pedestrian safety. Madam Manager.
Yes, again, this is in response to a matter that's been before, the council having to do out on Boilston Street. There is a report in the packet. And Natasha, if you want to address some of the highlights of it.
Sure. This is in response to the children and their parents asking for a, an improvement to the crosswalk at Berwick and Boilston. So, I, we're going to install a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. In general, if you're crossing at a crosswalk, and I know I've said this a couple of times, but the two things that make cars notice that there's someone crossing is a flashing light or a raised crosswalk. I'm not entirely convinced this isn't a reasonable place for a raised crosswalk, but I think it would need to be in conjunction with other traffic calming measures. I think this is a good stopgap solution where we can install a solar powered rectangular rapid flashing beacon. There are a couple of different versions. In one, it's activated by motion. So, when someone steps to the crosswalk. So, in the instance of children who sometimes maybe would think as soon as the light is up, like to your point on Andover, for instance, that as soon as the light is up and flashing, they're safe to cross. But it doesn't flash until you push the button usually. So, there is a version that starts flashing when someone steps into the warning panel and that enables it to be a safer. Again, pedestrians need to be aware and look at vehicles, but it does improve the safety. So, and I will work with the CFO to determine how we can fund that. But it's a fairly reasonable expense to improve the safety at that location.
Councilor Conway.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, anything that we put in there obviously is going to help out. But I will say, and we had quite a discussion on that Andover Street light at Douglas Road. And I was there with the crossing lady and we pushed the button and it blinks a yellow light. Now, if you see a yellow light blinking, the response usually is, I'll slow down a little, but doesn't necessarily mean stop. And, you know, and people are going to say, well, if you're in the crosswalk, they're supposed to stop. I get that. But we tested that. And most of the motorists failed that test. It must have went 15, 20, 30 right by us and we're just standing there. And we're kind of laughing at this point. It's ridiculous that nobody stops. So, I mean, you actually have to go out there and kind of wave something around. And I think that's where, and one of the motions that Councilor Millenazzo said that he heard about the flags. And I know that the crossing guard said, at least it gives, you know, if somebody's out there with a flag, it certainly will get someone's attention.
Yeah.
That little blinking light doesn't necessarily, that doesn't necessarily do it. What I'm nervous about, and the crossing guard was the one that brought this, brought this to the forefront, is that a lot of kids think they push the button and as soon as that light goes, they can start crossing. And the fact, they're talking to each other, they're not paying attention. And you know the cars just keep on going. And it doesn't matter whether it's a kid out in the middle of the street or not. So, I'm very, I'm very nervous about that. I'm glad that we have something there. But I think going forward, we have to have something that is going to, I think, make these drivers stop.
Yeah.
You know, I don't care if it's whether it's a police car or not. I mean, and I don't mean warnings. I think if all of a sudden you start to give us some tickets out, you know, like we saw on the, on the highway there, it will stop them eventually. But.
Yeah, I do think, I agree that enforcement and some punitive measures might be more effective. I do think on Boilston Street, it's a more narrow street. Andover is very wide and it's, and traffic goes very fast.
Right.
So, I, and in this instance, there is a crossing guard at the next crosswalk. So, and I know the police struggle to fill all of the crossing guard roles in the city. So, and that's another piece of that problem.
Right. We have a police car there now.
Yeah, I think that there is a, it's really a multi-pronged approach. It's education for pedestrians and for drivers. And, I mean, I would hope the number of times that this has come up, just in my short time at the city, I would hope that people out there listening are recognizing that pedestrians have the right of way in crosswalks.
Thank you.
Please stop for them.
I'm sure they heard that now.
Councilor Leahy.
Thank you. When you come out of the Pine School, is Berwick Street to the left or the right?
I believe it's to the left, I think.
Okay. So, the street that's up to the right, that just seems like a more natural way for the kids to go across to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that this crosswalk is used by the particular parents who live in the neighborhood off of Berwick. And so, they cross there and then walk up on that side of the street. At that crosswalk, that's closer to the school, there is a crossing guard there. Is according to what LPD told me.
There's a crossing guard where?
Like 500 feet further closer to the school.
All right. So, if you come out of the driveway and you go up to the right, there's not a crosswalk there though, right?
To be honest, I don't know off the top of my head. I really was just concentrating on the Berwick location.
Because I'm wondering if we should have a crosswalk cut into the curb and put a crosswalk up to the right. That seems more, everybody goes, you know, the closest distance
Sure.
to get into the neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's also like too pedestrian behavior. Typically, everybody wants the shortest path, the most direct path. We don't want to add a lot of mid-block crosswalks simply because as we've, you know, talked about, they're not particularly, they can be not as safe. I do think that Boilston Street, just given the number of questions that have come up about, is it feasible to have bike lane? Well, there is a bike lane, but is it, you know, traffic calming, et cetera? I think it's a really good candidate for a traffic calming study. And that would answer questions like, are the crosswalks in the right place? Do we need raised crosswalks? Should there be rectangular rapid flashing beacons at these locations? Do we need curb bump outs? Like, there are a lot of things that we can do as a city in construction projects that can make, and really improve pedestrian safety that don't really add a big price tag. So, but I would, I would hesitate to just add a mid-block crosswalk or add a, I think it should be part of a bigger study.
All right. Did we talk to anybody from that group that came down that night?
So, they will get a, the responsible, mail them a copy of the petition response so that they know.
Ask them what they feel the better entrance into the neighborhood is.
Well, so they were addressing that particular crosswalk, which is the one that they typically use. And the one that they've, yeah, and that's, and that's the one that they've, I think, actually saw someone get hit at is what they're on Halloween.
All right. And just one other thing. Did you give any more thought to the, having the lights flash all day long? Do you think they'd be more effective if?
So, I think they're more effective when they flash just when someone is crossing.
But I mean, the school lights, you know, the school zone, they flash all day long. And even today, I'm driving up there and, you know, people get mad at you for slowing down because you're going 20 miles an hour and it's 12 o'clock and there's no kids around.
Yeah, they should only be flashing during school drop off and pickup. And I actually forgot that you asked me to look at that, so.
So, if you could talk to the city electrician about that?
I will, yes, I will. Sure, I'll talk to him about it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have petition response, Route 38 project. Madam Manager.
Yes, the, again, we have a report in the packet. This pertains to the issue regarding the Mast Dot project out on Route 38. We, it was before the council, the intersection in conjunction with Boilston, Laurel and Route 38, Rogers Street. In response to that request, Natasha has been in touch with Mast Dot. I think the report clearly lays out the difficulties in terms of changing this. This project has been 100% design. It's actually being, I believe the bids are being opened today or were due to be opened today by Mast Dot. And so, it was clear from the report that Mast Dot would not redesign this because they chose what they felt was the safest design out of the four. If the city chose to pursue that, it would delay the project perhaps permanently. If it got delayed and we fell off the tip. This is a four and a half million dollar project that deals not just with this intersection, but as we've mentioned before, Andover and Nesmith Street, which is also another critical and dangerous intersection. Additionally, it would cost the city significant money. Mast Dot would not pay for this redesign. Mast Dot would not construct the redesign. So, the redesign could be $50,000 to the city to do. And as I said, Mast And as I said, Mast dot's not doing it, not because they're being stubborn, but they feel this is the safest design. And then any construction could be up to a million dollars that Mast dot would not pay for, the city would have to pay for. And so I think Natasha could answer any questions, but the reality is, the city doesn't have that kind of money to pay for that construction that Mast dot otherwise is paying for, and there's, they're feeling that this is the safest design. I don't know if that summed it up accurately, Natasha.
Yeah, that was, yes, perfect. Any questions?
Thank you, all set. Next, we have information reports, information budget update, Madam Manager?
Uh, yes, the Connor Baldwin, CFO, has a report in the packet to update the council as to the latest, particularly pertaining to what the governor's budget provided just the other day.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Just to update the council, we have officially kicked off budget season for the city. The departmental memos have gone out to department heads, and they will be submitting their department requests for the fiscal 2020 budget to us sometime next week. Also, the governor has submitted the budget, his budget, to the legislature H1, and that is our first look at the local aid picture, which is a pretty critical component of the City of Lowell's budget. Lowell, our revenue is made up of about two-thirds local aid, as opposed to about one-third revenue from the tax levy, so the state aid picture is very important to us in determining our budgetary challenges for the next year. So the, the most noteworthy of the items was that the Chapter 70 account for Lowell was increased by seven point seven million dollars, which is very significant. Over the last few years, we've seen increases anywhere from three to four to five million. This far surpasses those. On the other major local aid accounts for the city, the one that we look to the most is unrestricted aid, and that was increased by about seven hundred thousand dollars. On the other side of the cherry sheet, we also get a look at the preliminary cherry sheet charges or assessments that come from the state. The big one we always look right to is the charter school assessment, so that increased, we're looking at an increase for fiscal 20 of about approximately one point six million dollars. So that is significant. It's in line with what we expected and what, what we have seen over the last few years. The, the other accounts remain relatively the same. Charter school receiving tuition, which is sort of the offset for, for the assessment from the state, remains relatively constant. So that is our beginning picture. We have a number of challenges before us, so we're going to try to hold the line as best we can, but we just wanted to let the city council know where we're at in the budget process. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
I have a motion to accept the petition.
Wait, I think, a second. My counsel, noon, thank you. Next, we have, before Communication Planning Board, recommendation with respect to changing zoning ordinance to extending zone district, regional retail district, 55, 75, and 77781, Phoenix app. I need a motion to accept and place in file by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Milonazo. Next, in Communication Planning Board, recommendation with respect to amended codes of ordinance, Chapter 9, Board of Commission Committee to increase the number of associate members to the planning board. I need a motion to accept and place in file-
So moved.
Second by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Then we have Communication reappoint Matthew Denahue, Esquire, and Marjorie Miller to Lowell Civic Stadium. Need a motion to adopt-
Move to adopt.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Elliott. Roll call.
Ms. Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have Communication, notification to Marjorie Miller of her designation of chairperson to Lowell Civic Stadium Commission. I need a motion to accept and place in file-
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Elliott. All set. Next, we have the Communication accepting the resignation of George DeLuca, Hunger and Homeless Commission. Need a motion to accept and place in file-
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Then we went to the reappointments of the Hunger and Homeless Commission. Next, City Manager requests out of state travel for the Korea Center. Need a motion to adopt-
Move to adopt.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call.
Ms. Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're still under the communications portion of the manager's part of the agenda, I did want to call the attention to the council of a communication that was not in the packet but is on your desk tonight, letting you know that I have appointed Kelly Oaks as the new city treasurer-collector, and Ms. Oaks is a Lowell resident. Her background is exemplary. She has significant experience in financial, in finance, and has been a treasurer-collector in the City of Lawrence, and currently is, and she has experience in munis and all of the systems that are the same here. She graduated from the University of Massachusetts Lowell. I think she'll be a tremendous addition to, to the city, and will be coming on board on February 11th as the new treasurer. And I want to, I don't know if you have anything further, Connor, but I want to thank the CFO for serving as our treasurer for several months now, so, thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
I'd just like to say thank you for the information, and thank you to Connor Baldwin for serving as the treasurer for the last few months. He was probably one of the best treasurers we've had in the city. Thank you, Connor.
Move to accept the communication, place on file.
And second by Counsel Mercia, thank you. Next, we have votes from the city manager. Vote appropriate certified free cash to various accounts. We have the full reading, second reading by title. To appropriate $2,513,634 of certified free cash to various accounts. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Elliott, second by Counsel Milonazo. Roll call.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, are we on seven point one, or did we go past that?
Seven point one.
Because this was a vote to appropriate certified free cash to various accounts.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
On the third paragraph of the memo, it says, "Finally, a balance will remain to appropriate into the city manager's contingency fund to be reserved for addressing the bad bills of the school department." What do we mean by the bad bills of the school department? Everything that they owe, we're going to be now paying?
We, we had gotten some information from the school department that there were bad bills from the last fiscal year. One notification said $218,000 worth of bad bills. I think that number may have changed. We are looking for an exact amount, as well as what they're for. The council has to vote to pay a bad bill. Connor, you may want to address this.
Thank you, Madam Manager. So, I've been in communication with the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance in the schools. There is a specific process for allowing payment that is required to be sent to the auditor prescribed by the statute. One of that is a certification by the officer in charge of the bills, so we're waiting for a bit more information, one, as the manager mentioned, on a final total, because there was some discussion about bills that were from the general fund, as opposed to some that were, belonged to some special revenue funds. So once we have all of that information, we'll bring a vote before the council.
So I would like to know what those bad bills are and how much we're actually paying.
Right, and, and we, those would be a vote of the council, but just to-
So we're not voting for that now?
No, we're just putting the money aside, and we're putting it in the contingency fund until, until we have that information, when we do.
How much money are you putting in the contingency fund now?
The balance is-
So the balance is about eighty thousand dollars or so?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand.
Okay.
And we, again, we were told there were $218,000, but we haven't seen it yet, so...
All right, well, we could just know what that is, and then we'll vote accordingly. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Man. Through you to the city auditor. Have you received any communication from the school department as, as of yet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We had been in communication following a subcommittee, probably in October, November, around that timeframe, to at least just get a layout of what she was looking at, and I, the figure I had heard was probably about a hundred and thirty thousand, I think it was, around there, but I don't, I don't have a full-blown analysis of the, of the bills.
But I guess what I'm asking, everybody's got a different number of what they've heard. What I'm asking is, is have you received a formal notification as to outstanding bills from the school department at this point?
There's nothing formal, no. I've been in communication with her as well as Connor about getting a complete list or an exhaustive list of what, what is still outstanding.
Do they have any idea when they're going to have that, when they'll provide that communication?
I, I don't know. I mean, it was my impression that it was going to be done, or at least was, would be in the works, from when we, we talked probably a couple of weeks ago at this point, so, so I don't know when she's planning on getting it to everyone, but I'm hoping, obviously, sooner rather than later.
So you were, you were anticipating that you would have got it a couple of weeks ago, but we have not received it yet? Is that correct?
She had reached out to myself and to Mr. Baldwin as for the process on it, and we had indicated the process and hoping to get the details on it, and we haven't heard anything back at this point, so...
Right. So to answer my question, you were anticipating that you would get it a couple of weeks ago, but you have not received the communication yet?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Roll call.
Ms. Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, vote transfer $10,000 of fund for inspectors overtime in developmental services. We have the full reading, second reading by title. To transfer funds of $10,000 for funding inspectors overtime in developmental services. I need a motion to adopt-
So moved.
Mercy, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Ms. Matt.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo. Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
We had no subcommittee meetings, but is there any report, anything? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Just quickly, last night, the downtown neighborhood subcommittee meeting, most of the concerns last night had to deal with the traffic issues, the crossing issues that we covered tonight with the city traffic engineer, but there was one subject that came up, and you can use your discretion on this, Madam Mayor, they were talking about education by putting those pylons out in the street that say pedestrians have the right of way, and I know that, you know, we did discuss that they cost money, they get, seem to get run over a lot, somebody's got to bring them in and out, and they, they, you know, they're not light, so maybe that's something we could think about, if we could get some solution, maybe there's a time of the year we could put them out that work best and educate, again, you know, the drivers to stop when people are in crosswalks. But that was about it. The police department was there, they did a great job. Deputy Superintendent Gollner explained the crime report, talked to them about how the downtown section is now its own sector. People have noticed the increase in police, police presence, and very happy about that, so that was about it. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, that was a good report. I also, one, another subject that was raised was, again, the Village Smokehouse, and the unruly behavior that seems to be pervasive every weekend. But I think an interesting point was raised, Madam Manager, is we have four walking policemen that I believe are on overtime every weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, at that, those, at that particular time, which, which is necessary. However, establishments are not required to have details, and apparently, according to, you know, the, I think of the captain or the deputy superintendent, you know, the city doesn't require it, but we are essentially subsidizing, you know, crowd control for some of the bars that, you know, that have problems, so I don't know if it's, if a policy can be adopted or not, but it seems that, you know, these, these bars that have consistent problems, you know, they should have a detail, and I understand officers don't want to work alone, and it's a two-person detail, but I just think it's something that we should look in and see what the, you know, statute is. I don't know, Madam Manager, but it's a problem.
We can look into, we can get back to the council with a report on that. I mean, it is, it is a problem, I know, you know, in speaking with the police, sometimes it's very difficult to fill those details, you know, oftentimes officers are not interested in working in troubled spots like that, especially alone, but we can get a more full report.
Yeah, I, I think it is, they don't want to work alone because of past practices and what has taken place, so, you know, for those establishments that have a history of, of, of problems, you know, can we require them? I don't know, to have them have a detail, you know, maybe, even if it's for a certain period of time, but I think what has, you know, what the residents were saying, okay, it's, it's okay, and then it gets worse, or in the case, I forget the establishment that is now closed, is it Pub 74 or something, but, you know, it's gone, and those problems are gone with it, so...
Maybe the solicitor has something to say.
You don't have to answer now, I just think it's something that we should explore.
We'll look into that.
We shouldn't be subsidizing these bars for the, for what's taking place.
We, we will look into it, as the manager was saying, the, the new rules that the License Commission has adopted in the past three years or so, has created greater flexibility to do exactly what you're talking about in various ways, so we'll, we'll work with the License Commission and see what can be done to tighten that up.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, real quick. Counsel Elliott reminded me of this. A funny thing was, with all the kids being responsible downtown now, they all call Ubers, so now the police are having a little bit of trouble directing and having the Ubers pull up, and they're waiting, and so it's interesting how times have changed, and they're working with, with that problem now, how to get the Ubers in and out safely and get the crowds out of the downtown, so I never thought of that. I think it's a good thing they call Uber, but now you get the problem with the cars.
Now, it's the queue.
Yeah, interesting.
But they have come up with a solution to, literally a traffic jam at that hour of the night, working with the local bank, Enterprise, to use that parking lot, so they can stage these vehicles so other traffic can move through, so the police department is, they're right on top of it.
Thank you, and, and as was mentioned, the, which will have a more complete report, but the chief has made the downtown a priority, especially, not, not to the exclusion of any other area of the city, but after the disruptions and fights that had happened earlier in the fall, it is a sector now, and it's particularly important. There's a captain and, and eight police officers that will be permanently assigned there, and that, not just for the downtown, but to go all the way down toward the Hamilton Canal and across the area of the new courthouse and so forth. This is a large area, very heavily trafficked, very heavily, you know, residential as well as business. It's a multi-use area, and one that I think requires the attention of the police department, so we, we have heard from residents and businesses that they are pleased with the added presence and enforcement of the police in the downtown.
All set. Thank you for the report, Counsel Leahy. I needed a motion to accept the report, place it in file by Counsel Mercia, Counsel Kennedy. Next, we have claim of personal injury, property damage. I need a motion to refer to Law Department for reporting a recommendation-
So moved.
-by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Next, we have motions. Counsel Noon, request city manager to have Transportation Engineer review the dangerous flow of traffic at the intersection of First Street, Bradley Street, and State Highway, Route 110. Need a second?
Second.
Counsel Kennedy, Counsel Noon.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The motion actually speaks for itself. I just want to add that I know that our traffic engineer, Natasha, are aware of the concern, and she has been working with residents in those areas, and, and I know that it's going to take a lot to do anything here in term of costs and everything else, so I just, you know, saying that we can get a review on that from Natasha would be great.
All set. Thank you. Next, we have, by Counsel Noon, request the manager to provide a report regarding the updated status of the Smith Baker Building. Need a second? By Counsel Mercy?
I think, you know, next door, Smith Baker's, we have a beautiful historical building, but it's in a bad shape. So I know that, you know, work being done by the managers and to try to put this out on bed, into bed again. So I'm waiting for that report. It's an important building to our city. Thanks.
All set. Thank you. Finally, we have a motion by Counsel Kennedy, request the manager to instruct the Department of Planning and Development to assist the Dwelling House of Hope in finding an appropriate location for a residential program for women.
Second.
By Counsel Noon.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, first of all, let me just make a correction.